To the flag, the United States of America. The Republic which stands one nation of the government invisible.
Sunshine notice, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting agenda for Tuesday, August 6, 2024. The time is now 7:05. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the December 7, 2023, issues of the Nutley Sun, Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's office. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Mayor Kelly?
Present.
All present, Mayor.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We have a Board of Commissioners meeting minutes for July 2, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Communications, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We have two this evening. Holy Family Church has submitted a social affair permit application to hold a religious celebration for Thursday, September 19 through Sunday, September 22, 2024, at Brookline Avenue. And the second one is the Rotary Club of Nutley has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold raffles on Sunday, September 15, 2024, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., with the range date of Sunday, September 29, 2024, at 325 Franklin Avenue.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Reports, Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have a code enforcement report for the month of June and for the second quarter.
Thank you. Bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Bill list for August 6, 2024. Public Affairs, $514,529.23. Revenue and Finance, $2,980,165.26. Public Safety, $83,483.71. Public Works, $89,985.95. Parks and Public Property, $1,031,622.19. Water Utility, $144,722.44. Payroll as July 19, 2024. Regular payroll total, $969,869.48. Overtime payroll total, $80,523.40. Total payroll, $1,050,392.88, for a grand total of $5,894,901.66.
Move the bills. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And that's it for bills.
We have public comment on agenda items only. Anyone wishing to be heard on agenda items only, please approach the microphone and state your name. Seeing no one, Board Commissioners' announcements, Commissioner Evans?
Nothing from me this evening.
Nothing, Mayor.
Nothing, Mayor. I just, I just would like to remind the residents, there has been a tick down of these car burglaries in town lately, thank God, but there has been a couple. So just please continue to lock your doors. We say it over and over again, and the cars that get robbed and the houses that get burglarized are the ones that leave their doors open. So, Ms. Correll, please make sure you lock your doors also. Thank you.
I have, you know, tomorrow is Purple Heart Day. That's anyone who was wounded in action in service of our nation's military. And so make sure you remember in your thoughts and prayers veterans who were wounded in the battlefield. Ordinance introductions. I'm introducing ordinance number 3561 on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. This is an ordinance to fix the salaries of certain officers and employees of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, effective January 1. This is for non-union employees. And I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with a notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners shall be held on a second reading on September 3, 2024. So moved.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. The next one, Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 3562. This ordinance relates to authorizing the execution of a financial agreement on the Diamond Springs Redevelopment Project, which is 85 units, 82 of which are age-restricted, 55 and older. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on September 3. So moved.
I need a second. Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Stay.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. Ordinances on second reading. Commissioner Evans or Commissioner Tucci? Which one?
Yeah, this one is actually extending our fiber line network around the township. It's a part of a longer-term project. So this is a phase that will connect the fiber line to the Florida Loudoun Park on the bottom of Hancock's Avenue. Commissioner, would you like to say more about that?
Yes, this will also give us the ability to livestream games there from our Little League and our Farm League and any other events that are happening in the park, along with what we hope to be excellent live reception.
Okay. Tonight, we have ordinance number 3559 introduced by Commissioners, jointly introduced by Commissioners Evans and Tucci on July 2. We have a public hearing, so anyone wishing to be heard on this ordinance, please approach the microphone and state your name.
Move to close. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Who's the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. Moving along to resolutions, Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. My first resolution is for refund of overpayment of water charges for three properties totaling $871.94, as listed in the resolution. It hereby authorizes the treasurer to refund said amount. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
The, my next resolution is for the overpayment of taxes on the amount of $2,409.18 for Block 501, Lot 3, authorizing the treasurer to refund this overpayment. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
My, my last resolution is a resolution authorizing the insertion of a special item of revenue in the municipal budget relating to a grant that we have received for assistance with, helping with, it's a lead program in town in the amount of $28,000. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley. Now hereby request the Director of Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of the following items in the budget as listed, be further resolved. That notification of said budget changes shall be made by the Chief Financial Officer to the Director of the Division through the electronic submission process. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, Mayor. Whereas Department of Parks and Public Property determined that due to unforeseen circumstances, families had to cancel participation in programs offered. And whereas Department of Parks and Public Property has determined a need to refund the families, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized, to refund payments for recreational programs in the amounts listed below. For the folks at 11 Funston for Camp Nutley, an amount of $200. Folks at 80 Edison, again for Camp Nutley, an amount of $800. Folks at 94 Park Avenue for Camp Nutley, an amount of 400. And the folks at 90 Mount Vernon for Camp Nutley, an amount of 400. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley pursuant to NJSA 40A 11-1, made by resolution without advertising for bids purchased goods or services under an approved county cooperative purchasing program. And whereas the Township of Nutley is a member of the Bergen County Purchasing Cooperative Pricing System, and whereas the Bergen County Purchasing Cooperative has awarded a contract to Athletic Fields of America, 150 River Road Building, G Unit 4B, Montville, New Jersey, for synthetic turf maintenance, repair, and replacement services via the Bergen County Resolution Number 970-23. And whereas the Township of Nutley, Department of Parks and Public Property, intends to replace the artificial turf at Monsignor Owens Park, this is the soccer rink. And whereas Athletic Fields of America, 150 River Road Building, G Unit 4B, Montville, has provided a quote in the amount of $126,739,044. And whereas the cost of design permitting, construction, and improvements of Monsignor Owens Park, soccer rink will be supported by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, local recreation improvement grant program for the entirety of the project cost. And whereas Township of Nutley has allocated the following funds to support the project from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, a local recreation improvement grant in the amount of $65,000, and our own capital account, number G-04171403, in the amount of $61,739.44. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract for the re-turf of Monsignor Owens Park Soccer Rink be awarded to Athletic Fields of America, 150 River Road Building, G Unit 4B, Montville, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
This is a resolution authorizing the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriations from 2024 municipal budget pursuant to NJSA 40A:4-87. Whereas NJSA 40A 4-87 provides that the Director of the Division of Local Government Services may approve the insertion of any special item of revenue in the municipal budget when such item has been made available after the adoption of the budget. And whereas said director may also approve the insertion of an item of appropriation for equal amount. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, hereby request the Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of the following items of revenue in the calendar year 2024 municipal budget. The local recreation improvement grant from $0 to $65,000. Be it further resolved that alike some be approved and appropriated in the same budget, again from the local recreation improvement grant in the amount of $65,000. Be it further resolved that notification of these budget changes will be made by the Chief Financial Officer to the Director of Division of Local Government Services through the electronic submission program. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Right.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer be, and she is hereby the authorized, to refund $50 to the below-listed resident for a municipal parking permit payment. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
This is a resolution authorizing the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriations in the calendar year 2024 municipal budget pursuant to NJSA 40A 40-87. Whereas NJSA 40A 4-87 provides that the Director of Division of Local Government Services may approve the insertion of any special item of revenue in the municipal budget when such item has been made available after the adoption of the budget. Whereas the Director may also approve the insertion of an item of appropriation for an equal amount. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, hereby request the Director of Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of the following items of revenue in the calendar year 2024 municipal budget. Grant from, for Nutley Safe Roots to School, $575,000. Another grant from the Department of Transportation for Coiman Avenue Improvement in the amount of $481,926. Be it further resolved that alike some be approved and appropriated in the same budget. Be it further resolved that the notification of these budget changes be made by the Chief Financial Officer to the Director of Division of Local Government Services through the electronic submission process. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Whereas Resolution 183-24 was adopted at the Nutley Board of Commissioners meeting held on July 2, 2024, to advertise for sealed bids for the sewer line camera inspection, cleaning, and relining project in the Township of Nutley. And whereas the Township received one bid proposal from Arold Construction, 51 Powder Mill Ridge Road, Kingston, New York, and said bid exceeded the budget for the project. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the bid proposal submitted by Arold Construction be hereby rejected. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for the sewer line camera inspection, cleaning, and relining project in the Township of Nutley to receive by the Board of Commissioners in the Commission Chambers, Township Ball, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, August 28, 2024, at 11:00 a.m., prevailing time, which time they will be open and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Whereas bids for the 2024 Coiman Avenue Roadway Improvement Project, Bluefield Avenue to the Bluefield border, were received and opened on Wednesday, July 24, 2024. And whereas DNL Paver Contractors 675 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, was the lowest responsible bidder. Whereas the base bid for the 2024 Coiman Avenue Roadway Improvement Project is in the amount of $512,431.38, for a total bid price of $512,431.38. Whereas funds are available from account number 401657299, the amount of $481,926. From monies received by a grant from the NJDOT, account number GO417044, in the amount of $30,505.38. And have been certified, the Chief Financial Officer said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to DNL payers not to exceed And that the mayor and the township clerk are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract for the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracca? Yes, right, this is a resolution authorizing the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriations in the CY 2024 municipal budget pursuant to NJSA 40A:4-87, where Commissioners have offered and moved adoption of the following resolution. Whereas NJSA 40A 4-87 provides that the Director of Division of Local Government Services may approve the insertion of any special item in revenue in the municipal budget when such item has been available after adoption of the budget. Whereas the said director may also approve the insertion of an item of appropriation for equal amount. And now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, hereby request the Director of Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of the following items of revenue in the 2024 municipal budget. This grant name is American Rescue Firefighter Grant, with $0 to $75,000, 2024 Safe and Secure Grant is $45,150, click it or ticket, $7,000. Pedestrian crosswalk, safety enforcement, which I will remind everyone, please stop for pedestrians. More and more people unfortunately are getting hit by cars in Nutley than I've ever heard of before. That's from, there's up to $20,000 municipal lines, $9,321.27. Be it further resolved that alike some be approved and be appropriated in the same budget for pretty much the same amounts. Be further resolved that the notification of these budget changes will be made by the Chief Financial Officer to Director of Division of Local Government Services through the electronic submission process. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
I would just like to echo Commissioner Petracca's sentiments about stopping for pedestrians. I've seen people try to go around stopped cars for pedestrians, and I've almost been hit myself a couple of times in the crosswalk. So please be mindful of pedestrians. Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. My next resolution, I believe, do you want to take over? Mr. Bruno?
Commissioner, we do need, we do have a need to go into closed session. It should not take very long prior to this.
So can we leave the meeting open and maybe vote on this tonight? Come back and vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Good. Thank you. But we're going to hold this until later.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor.
We'll get through resolutions and meeting, public comment portion, and then we'll go into executive and come back. And then we need further executive. We'll go back. So I guess that means I'm up. I have Resolution Number 198-24. Whereas raffle bingo applications have been received from the following organizations. The Rotary Club of Nutley, Nutley Irish American Alliance, Nutley Irish American Alliance, Good Shepherd Academy Homeschool Association, Good Shepherd Academy Homeschool Association, Good Shepherd Academy Homeschool Association. These applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department for the dates listed herein. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved, and the municipal clerk is hereby authorized to issue said licenses. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. The next one I have on for this evening is Resolution Number 20824. And when I made the step to hire internally a town health officer, something that we haven't done in over two decades. Part of the reasoning for that was that we'd be eligible for more grant opportunity. And this is to create an appropriation for about $250,000 worth of additional grants that we would not have received, had we not had a health officer. So without further ado, resolution authorizing the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriations in the CY 2024 municipal budget pursuant to New Jersey Statute Annotated 40 Alpha : 4-87. Whereas New Jersey Statute Annotated 40 Alpha : 4-87 provides that the Director of the Division of Local Government Services may approve the insertion of any special item of revenue in the municipal budget when such item has been made available after the adoption of the budget. Where said director may also approve the insertion of an item of appropriation of for equal amount, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, hereby request the Director of Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of the following items of revenue for CY 2024 municipal budget. Grant name, strengthening local public health capacity, 2025, from $0 to $74,664. Sustaining local public health infrastructure grant from $0 to $168,030. Be it further resolved that the like some are proven and be appropriated in the same budget for the strengthening local public health capacity grant, 2025, from $0 to $74,664. Sustaining local public health infrastructure grant from $0 to $168,030. Be it further resolved that the notification of these budget changes will be made by the Chief Financial Officer to the Director of Local, to the Director of Division of Local Government Services through the electronic submission process. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
The next one I have on for this evening is Resolution Number 209-24. And this is for the lease of digital copying, printing equipments. I'm not going to read the whole thing, just the important parts. Whereas Leslie Digital Imaging LLC, LDI Color Toolbox, if Jericho Quadrangle Suite, 115 Jericho, New York, has been awarded the state contract number A404462-G/G-2075 for reprographic equipment. Whereas the said lease includes a total monthly lease payment in the amount of $629 for the Department of Public Works, $1,250 for the Department of Revenue and Finance, $286 for the Department of Public Affairs, and $286 for the Department of Revenue and Finance, and the Public Safety Department, $572, for a period of 60 months, which includes all parts, supplies, and maintenance. And whereas further funds are available from accounts 4-05-702-206, and 4-01-404-206, and 4-01-218-206, and 4-01204-206, and 401-220-206, and 401325206, 4-01. Sorry, and 4-01-110206 have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution now therefore be further resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, authorizes the execution of lease agreement with Leslie Digital Imaging LLC, LDI Color Toolbox, for the above colored digital copier systems in accordance with state contract number A404462/G-2075. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. At this time, we're going to open the meeting up to the public for anyone who wishes to address the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name as you approach the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. On this day, August 6, 44 years ago, my dad passed away. I'll always miss him. And one thing I distinctly remember is that he was always proud of me. He used to display my straight A report card for the customers to see at his bar in the Ironbound Newark. I know that he would be proud of me today, as I'm trying to help seniors over 65, who rent, including myself, to get a lower yearly rent increase of 2.5% rather than 5%. I'm asking that the Commissioners will follow suit and simply do two steps. The first is to have the administrative assistant post it publicly, and then the Commissioners vote a three out of five majority. This will amend the ordinance. Other towns that have this amendment have graciously offered their wording, which is as follows. their wording, which is as follows, is under two fifty-seven dash nine permitted increase. In any dwelling unit in which at least one tenant is sixty-five years of age or older, the maximum annual permissible base rent increase is two point five percent of the base rent. Subject to the requirement to notify the tenant consistent with state law. So I'm asking you to please do that.
Thank, thank you.
Janice Rubel.
Oh, would, would you be able to provide the, that language to the clerk?
Absolutely.
And, uh, we haven't forgotten about you. We, we know you came here, uh, last month. Uh, myself and the town attorney have had a, a sorry. So, so, uh, myself and the town attorney have had a, uh, a phone telephone conference with the Rent Leveling Board Attorney. Uh, he's doing his due diligence and preparing legal memorandum for the entire Board of Commissioners. And so once that process is completed, we'll be able to, to review that and, uh, take further action as appropriate.
Yeah, I thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here, uh, my name is Patty Little and I'm here to second Janice. Yeah, if you want me to call. I'm here to second it. Okay? And I also have something I'd like to address to the Commissioner Petracca. I'm not quite sure if this is the appropriate setting, but I saw something on TV. Uh, it has nothing to do with any, um, ordinance or anything like that. However, I think it does apply. Uh, there's a Mr. Renair Gracee, who is like the all-time greatest jiu-jitsu person. Um, Mr. Renair Gracee, he was some kind of champion in jiu-jitsu in the world. He, uh, because of all the controversy regarding the choking of many people by police departments, et cetera. He mentioned something called safe, S A F E, wrap, W R A P. And I bring it to your attention in the event that maybe it might be something for the police, EMTs, anybody else who may be required to use force. Um, so I'm only bringing that up so that you know about it. I didn't write you a letter.
I, I appreciate that and our, our officers are really trained. Sometimes it, it's starting to become to the point where they're training more than they're working, that there's so many, you know, things that the state of New Jersey puts on us. And, um, you know, I'm not a fan of, you know, police brutality and that kind of thing. So however, we could apprehend somebody, you know, safely for everybody i- i- is great. But if things keep going the way they are in New Jersey, pretty soon the cops are not going to have any powers because the way they can't chase cars now and they can't, um, you know, the new bail reform also. So I think what we have to do, and, and again, I appreciate you coming to the mic. That's very nice of you. And again, I'm, I don't applaud anything to do with any bullying of any sort. But however, I, I will state this as well tonight. If you get a chance to petition your legislators, you know, if a cop, if a cop is now chasing a stolen car unless it's a felon, you know, very serious crime. And once they turn the lights on, if that person decides to run, you know that the police officer has to turn down the side street to get away from that person? It's getting ridiculous, the laws. And then e- every night in Nutley, not every night because it's been much better, but for a long time, we've had a rash of burglaries. And these are quality of life issues that we don't want to see here in Nutley. Because, you know, we pay a premium to live in a, in a great town, right? And, and you as a renter also. However, we arrest these kids every night and ten, fifteen, twenty minutes, they're added, they're out of our, our hands and set free. So I appreciate you coming up here and I will definitely talk to the chief. But please, everybody who's listening in tonight or all, or you, all you kind people out there, please start contacting Murphy's office because if it continues the way it is, it's going to be lovelessness here, you know, because it's, 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 it's becoming very, very difficult for a cop to be a cop. And we're having, um, an executive session based on how we're hiring cops tonight because we can't even get people that want to be cops anymore. That's how hard that their, their job is, is becoming. So whatever you can do to help me, I would appreciate that also.
Okay, this particular, um, thing that was demonstrated on television uh, does protect the officers who may be involved in needing to take someone down. And it may not even be a, uh, or what do you call them now perpetrators, actors? It may not be a bad guy. It may be a person who needs to be subdued in order to be taken to the hospital, something like that. It would protect the EMT.
Well, we, we do, we, so you know too, um, we do, you know, for mental tr- tr- there's a patient or a person that has mental illness, God forbid. Um, we do training how to handle them and we also do autistic for autism people. Any people that have autism, which we, our police officers are trained and qualified to handle that. Because years ago, that was a sin, right? If somebody had mental illness or especially when autism was first coming out, you know, the cops weren't familiar with it and neither was any of us. And, you know, those people that couldn't control their feelings or their movements and arms, you know, they got punished, quite frankly. So, you know, we've come a long way. It is two thousand twenty-four. And hopefully we don't, we only see the good stuff on the news, not only the bad stuff in the future.
Okay.
But thank you.
But, uh, thank you guys also. I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioners. Okay. And again, I second Janice's motion.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to be heard this evening? Uh, seeing none, uh, we're gonna go into a brief executive session, uh, to, uh, for, uh,
Contract negotiations.
Contract negotiations and we'll come back out and conduct further business after this. Uh, so stay tuned. Uh, Madam Clerk?
I need a motion. Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter two thirty-one, public law nineteen seventy-five permits the exclusion of the public for meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public is, the, whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nut- Nutley move into closed executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Be a further resolved at the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and as such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exception provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
The time is now seven forty.
We're back on the record, it's 8:26 and we have a resolution by Commissioner Pacheco.
Yes, thank you Mayor. This is Resolution 210-24, this is a brief summary of what this is. This is what civil service is now offering up as a way to attract cops to our community through the civil service practices, although there is stipulations in here. So we talked about it in the executive for quite a while with the mayor and board of commissioners, and I am going to pass it as written.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye, as written.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli? Commissioner Pacheco?
Before I vote, I'd just like to thank the board of commissioners and all the interest they're showing tonight. It is very difficult to get, attract cops to any of these towns, but what's going on in this country, cops are villainized. I know you're probably getting tired of me saying that, but it is very, very difficult to get cops to any towns, including ours. And we're hoping that this resolution will help indeed get some value out of that. So I just want to thank the board of commissioners and the mayor for listening, and I vote aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. And I don't think we have any more business on for this evening, but I think we do need an executive session for contract negotiation and litigation. Anything else? I'll take a motion for an executive session.
Second.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now for their, I'm sorry, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, move into close executive session to discuss contract negotiations and litigation. Be a further result that the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when and as such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the township of Nutley, pending and or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exception provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye, and we don't have any more business this evening, so I'm going to adjourn.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
The time is 8:28.